Our flag is the United States of America and through the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberated and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for coming in. Uh, we're gonna start off, we have Jennifer Bond from Hunt is here with us tonight to give us a short, some details as to what their efforts will be in this revitalization downtown in the project we have coming up here, so.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm Jennifer Bond with Hunt Engineers. And first, thanks for selecting us to support you with the grant administration for the project. And I provided you with a handout that has on the front the project team, just so you're all informed, you know exactly who you're working with. From New York State Housing and Community Renewal, Rachel Bremser is your primary contact. And so I will be coordinating with her and have a meeting scheduled for Monday to talk to your project in particular. And then Patricia O'Reilly oversees her, so if anything Rachel can't help with, there's Patricia. I've listed the town individuals, and the one person I haven't met yet is your code enforcement officer. And that's somebody who will certainly be involved, likely with the inspection plans and any building specific reviews, so that's somebody I'm looking forward to meeting.
You can go.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I've listed there, first, the building owner for Times 12, 14, and 16 on Main Street. And then the Hunt team, Tim Steed as the principal and myself as your primary contact. And then supporting the company, Tammy Klinsmann, who's, she'll help a lot with the payment applications and things like that, so reimbursement. Yeah.
We just got started.
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted to make sure you weren't confused.
Oh, because I still show 620.
On the second page is the scope of work, so in the contract that we provided the town with, there's a shortened version of this, this is kind of the blown up version identifying all the steps that we'll be providing you with. So today's the kickoff meeting, and then we'll have a closeout meeting in person. Those are two guaranteed meetings where, you know, I'll be here in person, and if there are additional ones, you know, we can just talk about it and do that as necessary. Otherwise, our primary communication would be followed in an email, and take it from there. And so the first step, I've worked with Ed a little bit on the contract execution. So I know you've signed your grant agreement with the state, and they are receiving your documents, and then they're gonna send you back their signed copy, and that's when it's executed and finalized. And I think one of the forms that's still required is that authorized signature form.
The one we can't find.
Yeah, so I sent that to you, and hopefully that'll help you out.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, and then the other forms, they're listed on item 2B, and then the small Monroe, 2 through 7. If, those are things that, if you've already sent to the state, I would like to have a copy, because one of my rules will be to maintain a file for you that at closeout, you'll get a complete computer desk, a flash drive that has absolutely everything you need for the program, and you'll have that for future reference. And I can provide you with that in the interim as well, if you wanna have all the files sent to you quarterly, or, you know, whatever works best for you, like if you copy me on those other forms, then I'll have a complete set of documents for your record. And then one of the questions I have for Rachel at the state for Monday's meeting is moving into item C, that's looking at your, your contract schedule between you and the state. And there's, the numbers don't match exactly with what your application was, and they don't call out $10,700 in that contract, which was allocated for COVID-type improvements, so it was like a special use, it was like special fixtures in the bathrooms so people wouldn't have to touch it, faucets and things like that, so I just need to, I wanna confirm with her that you do have that money, in fact, since it wasn't listed in your contract document. And then, so once you have the contract executed, like I said, the state will send you back that finalized document, and then we'll move into your town-specific administrative plan, which is part of that contract Schedule D. And one of the requirements there is that the town has design guidelines, so you have like a plan of what this finished building would look like and applied with any of the code requirements. And I wondered if that's something that you've already developed as a town, or if that's something that needs to happen.
No, we haven't. I have communicated with Chris Costanza, oh, we specifically need that, for several reasons, not the least of which is the secret review.
Right, okay.
And I had heard a backfunk on that. One thing he did, and I don't get this way, here, trying to hold you up on your presentation.
Oh, you're fine.
We got his financial commitment documents, so I'll take them inside of file and give you a copy.
Yeah, and then, so there'll be some effort for the design guidelines then, and then we'll be finalizing the scope of work with Chris, so that we make sure that any code violations that are currently existing at those buildings will be addressed and fixed through his improvements. And then there's also a site-specific environmental review, and Chris did provide me with some preliminary work that was done, but there's more forms and research to be done, so I'll support you with doing that. And that will require a signature by you on the checklist, once that's all pulled together. And that environmental review, so Hunt will prepare it with support from Chris, we'll have you sign off on it, we'll submit it to the state, and then they review it, and once they sign off on it, that's when the project can proceed to the bidding process, but you can't proceed before that's finalized. You need your contract in place with the state, and you need your environmental review complete. And so we'll support you with that, and I know there's eagerness, you know, to move forward as quick as possible, you know, but we'll do the best we can with the process to advance the documents, and then however long it takes the state to review, that's how long I'll take them. Right, so, and Monday, that's one of my questions for Rachel, Monday, kind of what's their workflow right now, and how long do they expect that process to take?
I just wanna mention one thing, and I wish Mr. Costanza was here, because I don't want to talk to him when someone's around. He seems very interested in saving money on the administrative costs, because he doesn't wanna go over the $6,000, I know we're going over $6,000, but he doesn't wanna.
Well, we'll pay, you know, we'll pay, you won't pay more than we provide you with.
I'm not talking about that.
Yeah.
I'm concerned about cutting corners in that, I don't want, we don't want corners cut.
No, that's not my job to be there.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Hopefully the scope of work being as detailed as this helps you to feel confident that we're gonna follow the process.
Now, you're understanding of this grant, you have, for some reason, we find that we may become over budget on that one area. Is it ever possible to go back to the state and do an amendment to the budget and say?
Yeah, no, I don't think so, you couldn't have the, you could slide money likely, like between the line items.
That's what I need.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean amend the budget to say, okay, we're gonna pull it from here to cover it here, and you wouldn't exceed the dollar we're awarded, but you could within the budget work the numbers and ask to ship some money around, just as far as.
Yeah, I think that would be a reasonable request, and I can verify that Monday.
Okay, because that was a question that we had for, when the four people presented, everybody had a different answer, some said yes, some said no.
Yeah, well, certainly the total budget is what it is.
Oh, absolutely.
There's no additional funds there.
Now, this meeting with Rachel, is it just with you and her, or?
Yeah, it's just with me and her, there's a representative from the town that wants to be present. We were gonna kind of talk general program administration, but if, you know, if you have some specific.
Where will that occur, at her office?
It's a virtual meeting.
Zoom meeting or something?
Yeah, yeah.
What time is it?
Um, perhaps 11 o'clock, but I can verify that. It's on Monday, though.
Oh, it's on Monday, I thought it was tomorrow.
No, no, Monday, yeah, I'm almost, yeah, or I'm supposed to be at the end of the week.
I'm on.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so, you know, we'll work through compliance with that town-specific administrative plan, which is Schedule D of your contract. And then up next would be that agreement between the town and the owner, so Ed, hopefully you'll have that in your email mailbox now to work on. And then there are some attachments to that, and I'll be able to help support you with some of those.
Very good.
And then Hunt will be developing a list of eligible contractors, and the New York State program does require that three of those contractors be the minority woman business contractors, and you'll be required to send out the bid package to all of them. You have to receive back at least two bids, and then they don't require you to accept the lowest bid, but if you choose a bid higher, you can only be reimbursed for up to that lowest bid, and the owner would need to make up the difference. So, yeah, we'll, we'll support you through that process, but, um.
Does it have to be the veterans as well, correct, instead?
Yeah, yeah, there's, um, yeah, I think it focused mostly on the minority woman business, and I have to double check about the veteran on business requirement, but.
I figure so.
They require you to do it in the bid selection, but they don't require you to select them, because they want you to choose the lowest bid.
Yeah, yeah, it says equal accounting requirements and procedures, contract for certified minority women business enterprises and service disabled veteran owned businesses, SDBO.
Right, okay, thanks for that, yeah, we'll make sure, you know, we'll follow the rules when we develop that list of eligible bidders and support you through that contract process. Following the contract selection, then we'll move into construction management and quality control. And this is where, I would imagine it would be your code officer, that would be the one who would do inspections. They recommend an inspection at the start of the project, one interim, and then a final, and that those be documented with photos as well as notes. And the, it's kind of like a, a plan for what those documents should look like, and we'll support you with, with that. The financial management, all the funds do go through the town, and it is a reimbursement program, so first the owner constructs it, and then the, your code officer as well as the engineer will sign off that it's complete, and then the reimbursement will take place.
So when you say engineer, you're talking about someone from Hunt, correct?
Um, yeah, I think, I don't remember if that is part of the specific contract, but.
Since we don't have an engineer.
Yeah, yeah, we could provide that for you, that's easy enough, we have engineers.
Thought you might have one or two floating around in the back.
Yeah, we've got a few.
Now, the reimbursement, is it ongoing, or would it be at the final, the completion of the whole project?
At the completion of the project.
Okay, so it's not like part work, it's done, then submitted and reimbursed?
Yeah, because they wanna, the state wants to be confident that it's done.
Okay.
That's something that needs to be made very clear in Mr. Costanza, so sure he grasps that.
Right, because we're not getting that money in an account.
Well, it's gonna be in an account, but we can't release it.
Right, right, but that's what I mean, we're not, but I know they even go into positive.
He does take it, that he can, you know, as he goes along, he'll get bits and pieces, but he doesn't, and I don't think he quite understands that yet.
That's what I said, I don't, yeah.
Will Hunt provide monthly updates as far as where the, the average charge expenses go?
Um, as far as, yeah, the, I think Chris, you know, he would originate kind of the contractor invoices, and we can help to coordinate that flow of information to you. And then as far as like our time, yes, we can provide that too monthly, if that's.
That would be good.
Well, it was like a bill monthly according to the contract, so.
Yeah, or if you'd like to see the new bid a little bit different, we can modify that as well, yeah.
As long as it's optimized, we know what's going on.
Sure.
Now, he, he has his job, the, the work put together, the talent, how much say that we have and any changes we might want to some of the work they're gonna do on the building, or maybe something.
I think, you know, if your design guidelines or your code rules, you know, specifies, that's kind of your avenue for helping to influence the design.
That's another reason we need the complete designs right up front.
Okay.
There's the seeker, and then we need to know what's going on. Is that something you folks can look at?
Um.
I'm not so sure code, the first person else is gonna feel comfortable, but I may be wrong.
Um, yeah, I think we could, we could support.
Yeah, that would be good.
I'd, I'd like to look at it.
Yeah, definitely, we, we need to have it here, know what's in all those stores, and I know where the weak, some of the weak spots are, I think. You're aware Mr. Costanza's an architect?
Yes.
I'm not sure if he thinks he's doing his own work or not, I don't know.
Um, yeah.
Now, is he, like you said, he contacted you, is, is there, that chain of like communication, does it go through the town to you, or is he, is it okay for him, acceptable for him to talk to you directly?
I'm comfortable with it, it's your choice, you're the, you're the client, so you tell me what you want.
I think they've gotta communicate directly.
Sure, sure.
And if there's issues, we wanna know about it right away.
Sure.
We don't wanna play along, and then all of a sudden you're having, you know what, hit the fan.
Sure, right.
I'm not trying to be cynical about it, but being an attorney, we always look at the worst case scenario. What can go wrong?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, I think that's good, good. And I think that the final item here is just the ongoing relationship. There is an expectation by the state that the property will be maintained for five years, and so there are some, there's a property maintenance declaration that the owner needs to sign off on prior to being the final reimbursement, as well as the town needs to have a, a plan for how that monitoring will take place. And typically that's done through the code office, that they would do an annual inspection or something.
Whatever the owner signs, obviously would permit periodic inspections for that five-year period.
Right, yeah.
That's important also.
If the owner decides to sell before the five years, does that go to the new owner, or does he have to hold on to the property for minimum five years?
There is a provision in there, I can't recall exactly what it says, but there's a, there's a provision, and if he does that, that some of it may be paid back or something like that, I'd have to look that again.
Are there any other questions that you have that I should be investigating to support the production of this project?
Well, it's important for you to know, we haven't, the town hasn't done this before, I've done it with other municipalities, but assume we're totally ignorant, how's that? Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, this kind of came to us last minute, take deals, hurry up, or, you know, we've lost any opportunity, because we didn't have a lot of time to do investigations.
Yeah, and so as a town, you didn't actively seek improvement projects and select this particular project through any competitive process, right, this morning?
No, he didn't, and came to us for what we thought was just endorsement or support, but now reading it, it's clearly a grant to the town.
Yes, it is.
So it is, you know, I think if we were involved in the process from the get-go, we might have had a discussion on what those Main Street buildings would like, and maybe there might have been more included in there.
Mm-hmm.
So like, you know, so it is, we're kind of caught off guard. It's a great opportunity, I mean, I think it's a wonderful thing.
Yeah.
We're a little behind in our knowledge of the process, so.
I would like some clarification on the reimbursement process. I sat through an online training with some of those representatives from the state, and my notes indicate that, I'll just read it, says the LPA must make disbursements within five business days from receipt of funds, and it says disbursements are typically made 10 to 20 business days after request approval. So that made me believe that the reimbursements are incremental.
It does say that anytime, I don't know, Pete, I'm sorry. It's on page 10.
Is it up to a percentage, maybe?
It's not a percentage.
No, I guess I'm gonna need some research after, I'm sorry, yeah.
Our state contacts would have the answer, but.
Absolutely.
Specifically says that.
Because it seems like a pretty unrealistic expectation to front 300 and something thousand dollars. But I'm guessing Rachel would have the answers, and she was part of that online training.
It says right here, NYMS funds can only be requested for reimbursement for eligible program costs incurred within the grant pursuant to NYMS grant agreement.
Well, that'd be, that's, that's, that's hanging off there pretty good, because he could ask for reimbursement for, for the work that.
Well, I think it speaks to the inspection.
It's not complete, but it's, I mean, so anything's gonna be tied together in this thing, and I didn't.
Well, he can request it, and we can deny it, too.
True, I just, I just.
Crucial is that any time he requests something, we gotta have an inspector look at it.
Yeah, is there.
You have one of your people, you gotta.
There might be like a time period you wanna choose, that'd be a reasonable time that either your code officer could inspect, or we could send somebody to inspect, but that, I think that's under your prerogative as to how often you wanna, and how often you wanna go through the process of those disbursements.
That won't be, the code officer, we have no, it's not gonna be there.
His return.
So we're, we really don't know what we're gonna have for code officer, definitely. So that's a little problematic.
The period of the five-year period after completion of the project, says that we as the LPA must develop a formal plan for monitoring the properties during that five years, and there also have, we also have to ensure compliance with rent limits for assisted residential units. So is that something you can work up for us, that plan?
Yeah, I think there's a sample plan on, through New York Main Street, that will help with that document, I guess.
All right, good, thank you.
Yeah.
It's confusing, we need to hire you folks or anybody else as an administrator, but then, how board is the LPA, the local program administrator, that's kind of confusing, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah.
That five-year plan shouldn't have to be that complicated, just, something has to be put in paper, and we just check it once a year, right? Go through all the buildings and make sure everything's being maintained?
We gotta make sure that they have a list, and to.
That's true.
And another thought is why those pages, I mean, that's, it's gonna be a hard goal if this silver thing didn't go through.
I know, I was thinking about that all night, trying to go to sleep, I don't know what the heck we're gonna do if that doesn't go through. I'm surprised that's not something that came up as part of it.
Yes, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm pretty confident to.
It looks pretty good.
It's gonna, but, I mean, it looks like maybe we got that, that gap, but, uh, we haven't, we haven't had it, and.
It's not in our pocket yet.
No.
It's a big way of putting people.
That's, that's true, yeah. But that's, that's a big part of this, because you certainly can't put those apartments anywhere, you can't flush them, flush them to us.
I'm almost shocked that that wasn't some kind of precondition or anything. We'll just have to work those, and then we can get that done.
Are they currently on a septic system? Are they currently on a septic system, and you're gonna extend municipal sewer?
This is a confidential conversation, right?
Well, it's part of the secret process, so I'm gonna fill out that form for you, yeah, yeah, I would need to.
That's, uh, it's, it's in the works.
Okay.
This is well before this project ever come to light.
Hopefully once all of the flows smooth.
Good, Dan. Glad to see you both here tonight. Do you have any other questions, or?
Laceless shoes.
Well, I do.
I sent them myself, why not?
In doing the math, did we ever get the answer to the math question about the difference?
Yeah, you're missing 10,700.
No, we're missing 179,700.
Yeah, that was the local contribution, right?
Well, the funding source, and then 169, so my guess is the total product is 479,950, correct? But then the budget detail is only 2006.
And then the times seven gets you to the 306,150.
Yeah.
And that was like the COVID number money that was in the grant application, so I don't know where that balanced out, and this shows 169, as other sources showed in the application, it shows 150,000.
Okay.
So, yeah, this, this is a question I have.
So, so would you be the one to clarify that?
Yeah, I'd like to get that, yeah, to get that hammered out. Yep, yeah, I just wanted to confirm for you what time that meeting is.
So sort of, don't have the money, obviously, we meet once a month typically, are there gonna be available special means for these invoices, or?
Well, I assume you.
Well, I could coordinate our invoices.
We'll coordinate with them, yeah, 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 it can, you can choose how often you want to process those, and you don't need to, um, so you have meetings at 11 o'clock on Monday, and if Kenny might wanna participate, or if I do wanna participate, but I can reach out to Rachel to extend the invitation to, for the line if you'd like to.
I think I might, to just, to learn a bit more about the processes.
I'd like to also.
As much as I'm interested.
So that's the 7?
That's correct, I don't want anyone.
At 11:00 AM.
Okay. All set, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Very informative, thanks a lot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We also, did any touch?
Thank you. So we eat champagne, and?
Yeah, yeah.
These are our clothes, maybe?
I love you.
I don't think I have your.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send you an email.
You sent it to me? So you're the, the more sense, or is that your general location?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll try to rectify.
Oh, thanks, I appreciate it. All right, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, take care, drive carefully.
That's our deposit form, sorry to slow you down.
Do you, um?
Yeah, I'm gonna, this is our insurance certificate.
Okay. And then this. All right. Quickly, uh, my head, and the union contract, we should, we should talk about possible rates, or about what did, I mean, anybody's gotta, you think when you come up with a solid, you say it, or?
Well, I think we discussed there about 3%.
All right, thank you.
You mean for a rate increase?
Yeah, I think so, that was in line with what I saw from the federal, this year, and I was kind of talking to some other towns, I think two, two of the generals, what others are doing. I mean, who are you, who'll come back to me, a lot of, I ain't get a call back, but.
Belinda called Friday, she wants an answer sooner than later. I said, Belinda called Friday and she wants to.
Yeah.
Narrow something down.
Well, has the union committee met, have you guys been meeting to negotiate the contract?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we get to some place and then it'll go quickly.
So this is the big sticking point?
Well, yeah.
Everything else is true.
Everything, so everything else is, we got the uniform things that we. And, uh, the only other thing is the, uh, uh, drug and alcohol policy and that's. Pretty much it's, it premieres the policy we have for everybody, so.
Well, we did.
We didn't have one in their contract and I requested they have one in their contract.
I, I mean, I think it would be helpful if we ran numbers to know that, okay, if we, if they get a two percent or a three percent, what are we talking in terms of, like, from a budget perspective? Um, cause we do that anyway when we do a budget.
We did that last, I haven't got the, I haven't got the speakers on yet, but it was, uh.
Anyone asking for a percentage or actually asking for.
Their money.
I think it was ninety, was it ninety cents, I think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I said, no, we should do a percentage, and so then the percentage came up, three percent came up to basically a sixty nine cent.
Mm hmm.
Ring.
An hour.
An hour raise. That'd be obviously three percent for the next, your contract three years?
Three years, yeah.
Some recent ones have gone shorter than, because of the economic situation due to COVID, but that's pretty much over the hill now.
Well, it may be over the hill, but there are still some people out of work, you know, people paying the taxes, paying for increases, I mean, I'm not opposed to giving raises, but we have to also consider the people.
Well.
Aren't giving raises.
I'm just assuming, you haven't heard any, any detrimental on income from other sources. Chips I know is not counting, but.
No, I'm talking about taxpayers.
I know, I'm talking about overall income.
Overall income, yeah.
Uh, to the town.
Chips went up, didn't it?
Wasn't surprising.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got part of the Biden, well, not Biden, but Mr. Cuomo gave extra money out, cause his hands were tied here with all those little troubles he's getting into. Let's put, let's leave it at that.
Well, I guess the way I'm looking at Angela, that you, these guys worked through the pandemic, now they're sitting home.
Mm hmm.
Um, which they very well could have all, you know, played the, I'm afraid of the virus deal.
Right, right.
And then people would still be stuck in the home line of hell, cause they can't get down the roads, cause roads are low.
But I would like to see the numbers, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, yeah.
Well, man, yeah, it's easy to see the numbers, I mean, you can see their current rate, see what three percent's gonna look like for the next two years, pretty easy.
Yeah.
Which to me is a, to my eyes, it's, it's, it's a pretty fair.
Well, I, for what's done, I, I agree, it's fair, I just, I'm telling you what, what everybody else is, you know, generally what I'm hearing is.
Are they doing it for the same term though? Cause it seems to me with all of the talk of inflation, that if we lock in three percent for four or five years, that might actually be.
Three years.
Three years, that might be fairly competitive and.
Right, and I said, you're.
With inflation starting up.
Yeah, so three percent might be, because it's fair, I mean, they're, I'm looking here, the, the Senate's talking three point two and Biden's talking two point seven, so three is right in the middle or in the ass, yeah.
Well, they were, and I talked to some of them, they, their percentage elevates every year too, so that, uh, that makes a difference. So, I mean. I, I, you know, I'd like to kinda get this, so we can meet, have our, our meeting and get it settled.
Contract is up in August?
No, on December thirty first, but they wanted to get it amended now that we, the guys agreed to go to.
The whole administration.
We, we got the amendment in there.
Of course, that's a.
The contract, I'm gonna.
That does save the blow, so.
Well, that's, that's the other thing, I guess I take into consideration was three percent, which I, I already beat him down, because the, the ninety cents would have been probably about five, five percent.
Mm hmm.
They pretty much saved the taxpayers by their.
True.
Eight thousand dollars a year off uniform savings, and they could, totally go pump salt.
That's, yeah, that's a big point, that.
Yeah.
So. You gotta look, you gotta look at the big picture.
Right, the other thing that board could consider bringing up at this point is if you change the canvas less, you could prohibit possession and use.
Um, that's already through DOT, that's federally mandated with CDL drivers.
I know about CDL, but, uh, some of the municipal agencies I'm representing are prohibiting possession and use, just to make sure.
Well, that's, they're also working on that as well, through the, the union reps.
Okay, there we go.
Just about the drug policy you're doing.
There's, yeah, there's no, they have, really, there's no drug policy for those guys.
Well, that would be part of it?
That would be part of it.
Now, when you say possession, you're talking about just in personal.
Since it's, since it's, uh, municipal property, municipal equipment, you can prohibit the possession of it on the property and on the equipment.
Oh, absolutely, but I'm talking about, like, can we prohibit their own use?
Not outside the jet.
Okay, okay, that's why I was clarifying, because.
That's one of the issues, because it, from my experience doing drug court for fifteen years, it stays in your system for well over thirty days, and if you test positive and you haven't used any for two weeks, you're still on the CDL. As soon as pushed to make it legal federally, but I don't think that's going anywhere for a long time. And in New York, it's still illegal to smoke at the way you're driving.
Well, that's, I mean, that, I think that's a question that we can bring up in negotiations.
Sure.
Well, I would think you, I mean, I would think it would be illegal to, we should make it prohibit, we need an alcohol, you wouldn't want them to have alcoholic beverages, uh, probably.
And did, did everybody get a copy of it?
No, what is, I did not forward that.
Oh, okay, okay.
I didn't, I can, if you have, please, yes, I can.
It's, uh, but it's, it's pretty much near, uh, other than with that, it's pretty standard. And it covers pretty much all that.
I'll, I'll just prove for someone's.
Okay, well, that's, that's a big step, so that we can, we can work out negotiations. And I don't see that being a big.
And that takes effect, I mean, that would obviously take effect with the next budget cycle, but that takes effect after the next budget cycle, this, when we negotiate this budget, it would be January first, we're ready to enter.
I, I did get the certified receipt too, per, from, from.
So, okay, good.
That's it.
Let's move on, huh?
I, I was just.
All right, okay, let's start.
Do you wanna talk about rotary park for a minute? Are you, rotary park? Can you call me this second?
Oh, not that.
No, I'm doing that, not this meeting.
Okay, that's fine, that's where they're meeting.
We came, just, just two things rather than the meeting.
That's fine. Okay. Wind law, how many of us here are looking to do here tonight?
Right.
Okay, there's, you've got, uh, resolutions A and B, and then you have parts one, two, and three of, uh, FEAF. What we're gonna do, hopefully, if you're so inclined, is adopt resolution A, then we're gonna move on to, uh, the review of the FEAF for secret purposes. And the first resolution will designate the town board as lead agency and it's automatically a type one action, because of the fact that we're actually doing land use for the whole town. And then we'll go through that seeker, and then resolution B would adopt the FEAF, set a public hearing on the issue for July nineteenth at six thirty. And kick it down to Steben County Planning Board, soon to two thirty AM with a general municipal law. That would be the procedure for the next half hour till whenever, don't even tell me. So if you're so inclined, I assume everybody has copies of these documents?
Yeah.
If you're so inclined, a motion to adopt resolution A would be appropriate.
Councilman Banks can now make a res, a motion to propose adoption of wind energy facility, local law, two thousand twenty one.
Also, should I, I'll second the motion to adopt the wind energy facility law, twenty twenty one?
This would be just the resolution, no, we're not adopting the law.
Right, right, okay.
Motion made second to, uh, adopt a resolution approving the, uh, the town wind energy law, two thousand twenty.
Councilman, I watch her, aye?
Councilman, aye, aye. Councilman, aye, aye.
Yeah, supervisor McConnell, aye. Carrie. Looking at.
Question, I don't.
Did you have a question, ma'am?
No, no, I, I answered myself.
Okay. Uh, looking at part one of the FEAF, page one, there's information about the project. Name of the action is the town of Crasburg Wind Energy Facilities Local Law, two thousand twenty one. Project location is the entire geographic area of town of Crasburg. Brief description of proposed action is the town board of the town of Crasburg, after significant studies and work concerning wind energy facilities, endeavors to adopt a local law for the purpose of regulating wind energy facilities. It's a typo there, but we'll crack that, that are constructed and operated in the town of Crasburg.
Now, question.
Yeah.
We already have a wind energy facilities law, should it be amending or it doesn't matter as a cemetery?
It's, in my view, I, I thought about that, in my view, it's such a radical change from the last one, that I view this as.
Okay.
Virtually starting from scratch.
Okay.
Cause there's only two parts of it that had anything to do with it, the law itself will.
Right.
amend that. And information about the sponsor, it's the town, and the address, information about that. Looking over to page two, governmental approvals that are associated with this is, and A, that's a yes, because it's the town board, which will have to adopt the local law. No planning board action, no.
Yeah, I'm sure that.
Appeals action. No other local agencies, county agencies, yes, county planning board will have to review it as a land use law, and it's anticipated, we're gonna, I'll be sending that down to the county tomorrow. The rest of it is negative. Uh, no coastal resources issues, now we come to C, and the question is, will the administrative or legislative adoption or amendment of a plan, local law, ordinance, et cetera? Be the only approvals which must be granted, and the answer to that is yes. Because it's yes, we complete part C, and then we move on to, uh, F and G. D and E don't have to be completed, because it's not a specific project. And there's questions about land use plans, which we do have, and also with respect to, uh, any plant, special planning districts, excuse me, and there are none. There are ag districts, I believe, but that's not what they're talking about here. Is it within a municipal open space plan area? No. Is the sign of the proposed action located in a municipality with an adaptive zoning law ordinance? Yes. And it covers all geographic areas of the town again. Existing community services, and we talk about, uh, school districts, police coverage, fire.
With that, school, with things moving south, does enough voca and coha need to be added to that?
No, because they're not part of the town. This is about our local law.
Let's just, our.
Yeah, actually, project for a second. So then we skip D, E, and E, and I think we go over to page fifteen, probably. Yep, page thirteen, have additional information, we don't have any at this point, and G is verification. And if we adopt this, then the land will be signing it as the town supervisor. Any questions, comments, or corrections to part one? Now we move on to part two, and this is the identification of potential project impacts. And as you know from past, we can either determine that there's either no or small impact, or moderate to large. If you go with moderate to large, then you're talking about moving on to a environmental impact statement. And we'll ask the lead question on each one of these, and if the answer is yes, then we're gonna go down and cover A through H, or A through whatever you've got on those. So the first question is relevant to impact on land, and keep in mind, we're only talking about adopting a local law, not project itself. So, the proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. So will the adoption of a local law involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface? If anyone disagrees or has questions, just speak up while we're going through it. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in modification or destruction of, or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on a site.
I mean, after all these years, they can't create an FEAF that fits the passing of the law.
They just, they just amended it all in two thousand nineteen. They made it somewhat simpler, because you used to have to do parts D and E, which is total.
I mean, I understand this for a project, but when you're talking about passing the law.
Why they don't have a separate list of questions?
For just a many, or passing the law.
Adoption of local laws, I have no clue.
Criminal, and it's a waste of trust.
Almost. Impacts on surface water, proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies.
No.
Looking over to page three, impact on groundwater, proposed action may result in newer additional use of groundwater, or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer.
No.
Down at the bottom, number five, impact on flooding, proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding here. Put normal impacts on the air, same question, air emissions.
No.
Solid impact on plants and animals, essentially the same question, loss of flora or fauna.
Yeah, the trees took the, right, the favor.
Wait till we do the landfill. Impact on ag resources, same question, impact on ag resources. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from around the term contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. Impact on historic archaeological resources, same question, any, any of impact? On the law, the impact on open space and recreation, is any question essential? I assume it's still no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Twelve, impact on CEAs, we don't have any, so that's, uh, that, you know. Thirteen, impact on transportation. Fourteen, impact on energy.
No.
Impact on noise, odor, and light. Sixteen, impact on human health. Seventeen, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans.
Oh, right. I mean.
No, it's not, I answered.
I mean, I'm saying.
The only way I would say that it could be a yes, is if the, uh, comprehensive plan somehow encouraged. Construction of wind towers with no regulations on it, I don't believe that's the case.
No.
Eighteen, consistency with community character, I put the same question to you as with the community plan. The only way that, that would be a yes, is if. The comprehensive plan. the comprehensive plan encouraged construction of wind towers with no regulations on it. I mean, it may be essentially what happens down the road, but the locals are going to. Okay. So that's the end of part two. Any questions, comments, et cetera? Moving on to part three, this is the evaluation of the magnitude, the importance of project impact. Down at the bottom of the page indicates that we determined it to be a type one action, and then we identified the portions of the EAF completed, and in this case, we're doing parts one, two, and three. We flip it over to the second page, which states that upon review of the information recorded on the EAF as noted, plus any additional support information, considering both the magnitude and importance of each identified potential impact, is the conclusion of the Town Board of the Town of Pratsburg as lead agency that, and the recommended answer there is A, this project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore an environmental impact statement need to be prepared accordingly, this annual declaration is issued. And again, we're only talking about the adoption of local law, nothing to do with the project itself. Any comments on part three? If not, then we go on to resolution B, which recites that you've already been designated as lead agency, and that it's a type one action, that you had a copy of the wind energy facilities local law, and you had an opportunity to review it. Full environmental assessment form is being prepared to be reviewed. And this resolution would adopt the FEAF, issue an annual declaration. Public hearing on public local law served by schedule for July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at six thirty. Should be a PM in there. At the town hall in person, and the notice there will be made by the new council. And then finally, the proposed local laws referred to by county planning board for its review pursuant to GML section two thirty-nine M.
Councilwoman Einweiler, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution B.
Councilman Banks, a second.
Motion made, second to adopt a resolution. Presented, all in favor?
Councilwoman Einweiler, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Banks, aye.
Supervisor McConnell, aye.
All right, well, if I could pass these over to you, and ask you to sign them, please, so I, using the sign to, uh, that. One signature on each page, uh, it's been off the map for.
Going to have to leave a loose shirt there.
If you want to give one other copies, it's the same, that way, uh, Kim can have an original shot. Or you want, wants to give those up.
What page is that, on the first section?
On page thirteen. Part one. And on the second page in part three.
Where was it?
About a third of the way up where it says Leonard McCall. Sign it? It said, it should be just two pages, or maybe it's even one page long. That's, that's, isn't that part one?
Part two is there, so.
Oh, you don't want part two, you want part three?
That's the last page, then. The last page is part three.
Oh, oh, that's right, except I thought we.
There it is. Thank you.
Should he correct the date, or does it matter? It says six three.
Today is six, supposed to be.
No.
Six three.
Six three.
Is that you working there for a minute, Angela?
I had trouble keeping track of the days.
I'm going to rotate this, it's two weeks. We, we open, it's Wednesday.
Oh, really?
Yeah, have you been seeing any of the progress?
For this?
The outdoor safety generally?
Yeah, you're lighting every day, it's nice.
It's looking nice, but, you know, weather, it's scary.
All that superstructure, you want to put a roof over it?
No, roof, I know, I don't know, well, just logistically, it wouldn't be possible, so. I think we could have, but it would have cost way more, I mean, lumber's already into the roof.
With respect to the proposed local law, uh, you had sent to a version that purports to be modified to one twenty-four twenty-one. I found some additional language, and I almost think, did you, did you prepare this, Pete? It's heavy, heavy page.
No, John shared that with us.
And it?
Yeah, that was the enforcement, but we talked about.
Yes.
Okay, so we have the final version of the local law, this is the one that we're going to, uh, have.
So the one we just received is the most recent one. One twenty, one twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes, and we're going to date it the third as to when that was.
I forget it. If everyone will go through again, make sure we don't need to make more changes, because we don't want to have to have another public hearing and another recording coming. But we could make sure that was where we are. I know we've been working on it for seems like ten years, but probably not quite that long. That's all we have for the one month.
Okay, so this was the law, and these were the modifications to the law, correct?
That's what, what you just mentioned, John said. Is that covered?
Yes. So these are the ones that we, this is the one that has been updated.
The one that you received from Kim. The quick one. Which is seventeen pages. Is the one that will be going to the county and ultimately adopted by the board. It's supposed to do all.
No. When we were meeting to discuss this, there were amendments to the legislative findings, like we struck four, and we added some language, and yeah, I don't see it, I think that was I don't know what else was.
I don't have another, I don't have another version that can figure out if it's going to come.
No, we struck five. Four and five.
Why would it be taken for, uh, the Town Board of the Town of Pratsburg as the general responsibility of protecting scenic and aesthetic resources?
I, there was just, remember, we had a discussion about it, um, and I know John, we'll see, John, it was, I know it was John, he's on the full channel here.
Oh, this John, I haven't met John Servo.
No, no, John Underhill is the one who was concerned about legislative findings, and like the public, you know, uh.
But we can amend them right now, you tell me what to do.
Well.
We can amend them. So this, this is what John proposed?
No, no, John Servo proposed that.
That's what I was talking about.
But John Underhill had made changes to legislative findings that, um, I see.
Talked about it, then.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't, it's not essential, I think it was more, remember, the concern was that the town was a negative tone, and, you know. So that, like, number one, um, public comment on wind energy facilities, the scientific data and other sources indicate that while industrial wind energy facilities may provide fiscal benefit to town residents, they also have the possibility to produce detrimental impacts on persons, animals, habitat, resources, and property, if not properly regulated.
No, we can change it.
I mean, I'm.
It's up to you folks.
John is the one that was, we won't add him about it, I mean, that's up to you.
I have, I remember the conversation, there was certainly some delegates.
And then, um, three, um, are important factors to be considered with, period, and strike dealt with.
How about this? If we've already talked about it, you've got it there, is it possible for you to do the amendments in your computer?
Yes.
Send it to myself and everyone else?
Do you need?
Those aren't going to affect doing the seeker again.
Right, right. It was just terminology, because we had decided if we were going to change anything, um.
Whatever the board wants to do is within consensus.
Did we really decide we're going to change it, did we just?
Yeah, we, we discussed it, I thought we were going to.
Oh, I thought we just discussed it.
Angela, if you want to let me make a copy of yours, I can make the changes, so you don't have to.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, that'd be good, um. I think what we decided was we weren't going to, um.
In other words, the substance of law will not be changed.
Substance of law wasn't changed at all, because we had decided that it, you know, based on the very provision that.
This, I'm trying to remember this.
Yeah, why?
Did you not thought the town of those two's in here?
Yeah. Now, the enforcement fund, the escrow account should be in the amount of one sixty, we did update that, let me see if that's on here. Yeah, see, that's not updated either, so. So, Kim, if you wanted to.
Which is it?
Uh, page fifteen, the escrow amount, we up to two, one sixty.
Okay. I mean, sixty.
Page fifteen, under section sixteen B.
That, I think, like, we talked about protection of UBS, and, well, but I guess we decided we're going to just keep everything else as is. It was just the legislative findings that were going to be.
Well, we got to change that one sixty.
Yes, that had.
We got that, okay. And then if you want to do that, Kim, could you make those changes?
Yeah.
And the one question I have is, in this new document, toward the end, it says that Article eight amendments is hereby repealed and tolled. But I don't see anything in the new document that would provide similar provisions.
Where was that?
Page eighteen.
Article eight amendments.
Eighteen or sixteen.
Well, that has to, that that is covered by state law, how you amend local laws anyway. I think that was worded kind of weird.
Because we, I don't know, obviously, it was originally read that the Town Board may amend its own motion, or upon petition after public notice and hearing, amend this local law pursuant to all political requirements of the.
That's pretty much the fucking state law, so.
Okay, so it would be redundant, thank you, but.
Thank you, Angela. Yes. In the hall.
Yep.
So what else are we covering?
That was it for tonight.
The landfill, that's always interesting.
I mentioned the one the other day I got over, we need, is that about the radiation gap?
Yeah.
That I talked to?
Yeah, it's a land company.
Well, in all fairness, I don't think we should be doing another bid.
Yeah, no, no, I agree, but.
We turn people away from, from definitely meeting, I think that.
Excellent, we'll talk about it later.
That's why we to regular board meetings, it's just not fair to everyone else that called up.
Totally agree.
And the levellage of the digger.
Oh, good.
Did we owe it?
We're getting reenveloped, it does allow us.
Okay, without ours, excellent, thank you.
Make a motion to, and a special meeting.
Councilman Shai, I'll second the motion to.
Motion made, second to, uh, amend the, uh, amend the special meeting, Pratsburg. Town Board, all in favor?
Councilwoman Einweiler, aye.
Councilman Shai, aye.
Councilman Banks, aye.
Supervisor McConnell, aye, passed, thank you, thank you, everybody, thank you.